His time in mind will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the implication by Reverend Jones.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal and always, God, we come looking to you for guidance. We pray that you might have your way. Help us to be able to be faithful stewards of the responsibilities given to us. We ask your blessings upon all citizens and citizens of Appomattox.
Okay, well now called for setting the agenda. Does any supervisor have a change, addition, or deletion to the agenda? Yes, Mr. Wolfkill.
I would like to add to the agenda that we discuss the Appomattox ARPA project.
All righty.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda adding funds back to the Appomattox Civil War Museum.
I believe that's already on the agenda, Mr. Jones. It's item three on the agenda. Any other additions or second to Mr. Wolfkill's motion to add the ARPA funds? Any further discussion? All those in favor, let's see, with the amended agenda to add the ARPA funds, Mr. Wolfkill?
Yes.
Reverend Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Chip? I vote aye also. Let's make it Agenda 9A right after the library. All right, we're in budget work session right now, so I get first up, we have Mr. Greg Zody and Ms. Beverly Hawthorne representing Virginia Crossroads to present that we've requested them to come forward and discuss their FY25 community agency funding request.
Good evening. My name is Greg Zody. I'm the current Chair of Virginia Crossroads and my other job, I'm Director, Planning Director, and Economic Development Director in Nottaway County. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Beverly Hawthorne. She's the Project Manager for Virginia Crossroads. While we're doing, just a quick, our request is $4,500 for this year, and this has not changed, I believe, since fiscal year 12. It's always been $4,500 contributing, as do all the other, I think, 11 members within our region, within our group. But it's $4,500 request this year. And with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Hawthorne.
Okay, I'm the historian. I'm the one that's been around since 2003. We'd like to point out, first of all, to you all, that y'all, Appomattox was one of the first members of Virginia's Retreat, which is now goes by the name Virginia's Crossroads, which started in somewhere around 1996, 97, with the formation of Lee's Retreat, which was then adopted by the Civil War Trails, and Wilson Couch Raid was designed and developed to go through the other counties that are in the organization called Virginia's Retreat. And with those two together, the Civil War Trails started. So we were the first with Lee's Retreat. And now, as a part of that, we still have a seat on the Board of Civil War Trails, and we also have many things that the Civil War Trails people do for us. So I'll be discussing that as I hand these things out. These are examples of the items in which we advertise. The goal of Virginia's Retreat is to be a marketing consortium for, let's just imagine it, a marketing consortium for all of the counties that are members and the two organizations that are also members, which include Virginia State Parks and the National Historic Park here at Appomattox. Those are also voting members. We've always had representation at all of our meetings by Virginia State Parks because they have so much in Sailors Creek and all along in the whole area. In all of those brochures, there is a map somewhere of the Virginia's Crossroads area. And just for a quick, Appomattox is our most western point and the end of Lee's Retreat, obviously. Buckingham is also in the organization. Prince Edward County, Amelia County, Nottaway, Lunenburg, Mecklenburg, Charlotte, Dinwiddie, Nottaway, Brunswick, and recently Greensville Emporia, and then the city of Petersburg, which was the start of Lee's Retreat. So this is how the organization was formed, was the development of Lee's Retreat. After that, they got together officially as Virginia's Retreat and started advertising in many magazines. And as you will see there, we have kind of narrowed it down to a few of things that we advertise in, and that is the main thing that we are here for is to market the tourism assets for all of the region. How we do that is somebody has a brochure that looks like this. This is Trailblazers Welcome. One of y'all has this. And that has got each county in it with at least five things that are important in that particular county, and these are the membership. It also has the map for this Virginia, the Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail, which is owned by Virginia's Crossroads, Virginia's Retreat. That is owned by us, okay? It is not a part of the federal Civil Rights Trail. It is not a part of that. It is separate completely. The grassroots efforts of how people were educated when they were not included in the public education system. That includes women, American Indians, and African Americans, okay? Those are the places that are pointed out, and most of the places happen to be churches, which is where the people were educated prior to coming to the public schools. So we have been advertising in this as our brochure. We also have been advertising in the Civil Rights and Education Trail brochure. This goes out. And again, it has all the counties and all the stops. And understand that both of these were started when the Virginia Department of Transportation was very heavy into travel and doing these trails with cars. Well, out in the country, that kind of makes sense, too, you know, because you can't walk to all these different places, okay? And as we found in COVID, it was a good way to go places and do things without being around a whole lot of the people. So it had a little bit of a resurgence during COVID. Just prior to COVID, we took on the name Virginia's Crossroads because we found out when you Googled Virginia's Retreat, it took you to a whole lot of information about spas. We decided, well, we didn't think that was what we wanted them to think of, so Virginia's Crossroads was the name that we came down to. We worked with a group called Eddie Communications. We had just done a marketing study prior to the 2015-16 time period, and that market study is who told us we needed to change our name, that we needed to center in on some marketing, and to do a new website and new brochures. So now, in 2024, we are going to do a new one of these. That will be ready by the end of June, hopefully. We're going to do, this is new. The Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail was done with the addition of 12 new sites in the last two years, and this was done with a grant from the Tobacco Commission. African Americans on Lee's Retreat has been recently redone as well and taken over by the Crossroads. And something that we've done recently, somebody up there has a magazine that says Hunting Fish. If you'll hold that up, whoever's got it. Hunting Fish is over here, okay? That magazine is put out by USA Today, and it is also stocked at All Bass Pro Shops and other sporting goods stores like Dances in Petersburg and other places that have sporting goods, and particularly hunting and fishing things. We advertise in that magazine, and we've been doing that for three years now. The other thing that we've been doing for three years, and somebody has one of these, and this is also a USA Today publication, and we advertise in the Black History Month publication, which is separate from General USA Today. This goes all over the United States, and we have one ad in there as well. So do any of you have any questions? Oh, I didn't.
Any questions from the board?
We also in the Virginia Travel Guide, okay? We have advertisements in the Virginia Travel Guide. Somebody has that. And we also have each county that is represented is in the Travel Guide with specific activities to come and see.
We very much appreciate your presentation. We had questions about what all you did for us because we hadn't seen anyone in person in a while. So now we know, and we can more intelligently make our decisions.
Okay, and Ann told me to be sure to tell you all this, which I did forget to say it specifically. One of the things that your dues does cover is the maintenance on all of the Lee's Retreat signs, okay? The Civil War Trails produce signs. Your maintenance fees for that is covered by Virginia's Crossroads. Also, all of your Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail signs, the maintenance fees are covered by your dues for that. So, and we just recently completed a grant that hopefully will help us with the printing of the new Lee's Retreat, which is basically just our area, the new Lee's Retreat map that the Civil War Trails will produce. We're supposed to help with that because it's for our area.
Thank you.
All right, and I'm going to take those things back up.
All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Been around since 1996 or something.
Okay, and then another request by the board for more information, we have Ms. Stephanie Keener, Executive Director of the Small Business Development Center of Lynchburg Region, to come and tell us about her agency.
Well, I've read some magazines, but you get to keep up. Sorry, I'm clicking. Sorry about that. My name is Stephanie Keener. I'm the Executive Director for the Small Business Development Center that serves Appomattox County and the Lynchburg region. The SBDC is a member, is a part of 29 small business development centers that serve the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are partially funded by federal grant from the Small Business Administration, and the county's funds, which are contributed to the SBDC, are directly matched by the SBA, creating a total fund that helps us serve the county and the region. The SBDC's role in the county is to provide business advice, counseling, and training for our small businesses in the region. And we do that totally for free and confidentially. Most of our training is totally free, and our business advising is always free. We have myself and two other business advisors who are SBDC advisors. One is Juwanza Hall, who is a marketing and branding expert, and the other is Jordan Reeves, who is a finance and planning expert. We also work with several other consultants, including folks who have insurance industry backgrounds, manufacturing backgrounds, and other consultants on our sort of roster that we can pull in when we want to have someone locally. But we can, of course, pull in experts from across the state through our network of Virginia SBDCs across the state. Last year, in the fiscal year 2023, across the region, we served 131 businesses in one-on-one advising. In Appomattox County, we served about 25 businesses in training and one-on-one advising. And I just pulled the statistics, and I was amazed to see that Appomattox County businesses had attended, let me see, I want to double check, 79 different events with the SBDC across the state. One of the things that we do is, we've really tried at the Virginia SBDC to keep a lot of our training online, and we find that that's really effective. So we've had Appomattox County residents joining us for at least 75 events across the state. And those can be either in person, so you could, you know, come into Lynchburg or run up to Charlottesville or over to Farmville or wherever. But they are coming in from all across the Commonwealth. I also pulled out some of the titles of those because I just think that's interesting. And we've seen folks attend sessions on funding, how to, funding fundamentals for your small business. We have folks attend the Create Virginia Conference, which is our small conference that's focused on business skills for artists in Virginia. And we had a couple of folks attend the Intellectual Property Fundamentals. So I'm really interested to see what those businesses are doing now. I might follow up with them and see what they're up to following that training. Of course, many of those folks attended our Startup Toolbox classes, which is our sort of suite of classes that are designed to answer the most basic and important questions for brand-new startup businesses. Monthly, on the third Thursday of every month, so that's this week if anybody's keeping count, we have a class called Startup Toolbox Get Started. And in that event, it's free. It's about 90 minutes. And we cover things like, this is where you go to register your LLC. You can do that online. This is how you do that. We cover what the businesses license are in our municipalities. And when you go through that program, you get access to a Google Drive called our Startup Toolbox. And inside that toolbox is not just the correct links, which is so important, for all of our municipalities, including Appomattox County. There's a sheet just for you guys, how to get your business license, how to contact economic development if you need to do that, those kinds of things. We have really wonderful basic tools in there as well, things like a basic business glossary. We have a one-page business plan in there, a budget template, a budget template that you can just, you know, fill out with your basic budget items, so that they can continue to come back to that toolbox and use the tools that are inside that Google Drive. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. We always work to update and curate what goes into the toolbox. So if Appomattox County has any new business resources that we need to make sure we know about, if you guys will let me know. And we always want to invite you to attend those events. So if you'd like to do a Startup Toolbox with us, just let me know, and I can send you the link, or you can just go online and register and have the experience of any, just like any other client. Also, as a reminder, through the Virginia SBDC, Appomattox businesses have access to our experts and our staff at George Mason University, where our headquarters are at the Virginia SBDC, and those include export resources for our Appomattox businesses. In fact, myself and our team member, Jordan Reeves, are getting recertified in international business counseling right now. That's required of us by the SBA. And also, a program called the Innovation Commercialization Assistance Program, which is designed to help businesses that have products that are new commercialization, new inventions, coming to market to help them understand how to do that, how to find funding for that, how to find the right customer for that. So any questions about our program? About two years ago, an Appomattox County business was in our Success Stories book, which I just handed out, so it was Balance Gymnastics.
Any questions from the supervisor? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now we're caught up on what you do.
Yeah, always happy to come and let you know.
All righty, next we have Mr. Bill Jamerson, who's requested to appear before the board to discuss funding for the American Civil War Museum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Jamerson, 9398 Redhurst Road. I'm here tonight to talk to y'all about action y'all took at a work session on March 5th. And I'd like to read part of the minutes from that meeting. "All funding decisions were unanimously accepted for the American Civil War Museum." Supervisor Wolfkill, open discussion. "I'm uncomfortable with giving free enterprise money." Supervisor Hips remarked, "I want it to succeed, but I want it to support itself." On motion to zero the funds to the American Civil War Museum, vote voted three to two, with Jones and Carter voting against the measure. I can't tell you how disappointed, how hurt I was when I read that. I felt like I'd been kicked in the gut. The museum is a nonprofit organization, and I don't know of any museums in this area, maybe even in the country, that operate or sustain themselves with their public and private funding supporting it. And that's the way this museum is operated, museum Richmond is operated, as I know, since its organization was formed. In 2019, 2020, Dr. Paul Harvey, Mayor of Appomattox, got together a small group of us, and I think a small, probably just four. I don't know whether I volunteered or whether I was recruited, to look into what we could do to bring new life into the Civil War Museum at Appomattox. We may start to meet in some breakfast meetings in the morning, and we wanted to relate to Richmond because we had no contact with Richmond office that didn't keep us informed what was going on. And we thought, if they won't help from Appomattox, Appomattox needs to have a voice. And we proposed that we help organize a local museum board, or committee, whatever you want to call it. We did not have a full-time site director at the time. We thought it was important that we have a full-time site director. We started communicating that to the museum in Richmond. In fact, the executive director came to Appomattox on several occasions and met with us. We thought we were making good progress, but Harry Butchie resigned and took another position at the museum in Yawktown. Then we had an interim, then COVID hit, and everything, not a whole lot happened during that period of time. We continued to meet, and we continued to hope that things would get better. So we lost her at that, during the COVID time. Dr. Ron Havers was hired as the new Executive Director of the American Civil War Museum in May, excuse me, March of 2021. His first visit was to Appomattox on April 9th, 2021. We shared with him our concerns, and he assured us he would work with us, and he would come to Appomattox at least once a month, and he's exceeded that. He's come more often, and a lot of times he's come, he's brought staff with him. And he is here tonight with us, and I hope he has opportunity to address this group also. But with his help and support, we were approved to have a local council of over 12 to 15 members. And when that was approved also, one of the big parts of that, the Chairman of our committee was elected to serve on the main board in Richmond, which was, we thought was a big help for us because we have a direct contact with Richmond. Now we know what goes at their board meetings. I don't remember the exact date that our board was approved at that time. But we got to work immediately. We had a great board, and we've had great participation from our board. In mid-'22, we started talking about a capital campaign for the Appomattox, raising money for the Appomattox board. I was elected Chairman of the Fundraising Committee, and we had a goal of $500,000 over five years. We met with the supervisors on September 22nd, '22, and requested a lead gift of $75,000, which was granted. With that $75,000, we started canvassing the local community, citizens, foundations, whoever we thought could help to raise money. Over the next several months, we reached a goal of $520,000. And I'd like to point out, maybe the county's commitment represents about 15% of that goal. I think the museum has been a great success, been a big thing for Appomattox. And with the board's continued support, I think there are greater things can be accomplished. And I just want to point out a few of the, what I've looked to as successes. I pointed earlier, great board participation. We've had two great fall festivals that pretty much were put on with board members in support of locals with support from the Richmond staff. We've had two Christmas festivals, Christmas programs that were well-attended. We had the Angel Tree at the museum. And if you had a chance, if you go by, I went by, just the gifts that were given from that Angel Tree just would blow your mind. I think probably a can of dozen bicycles. And now, these were just not toy gifts. They were nice gifts that people came up and supported that. There have been a number of history programs, book talks. The latest one been last Thursday night. And we always had expanding speakers for these talks, and one of Thursday night was very well-attended. And there will be more of those, of these book talks. School programs, been a number of school programs, both private, public, and homeschool. And all these kids, when these programs, when these kids come, they get in free for those programs. And what's happening as we speak now, we're having a new exhibit called Greenback America. This exhibit's been moved from Richmond, been very successful there. It's been moved to Appomattox at considerable expense, and it's being set up now. And our board is actually meeting tomorrow, our committee is meeting tomorrow. And we will set probably an opening date for that new exhibit. I'm anticipating it'll probably be in the next 30 or 45 days, and we expect that to make it a gala event, a large event for the county and the museum, and for the opening of that exhibit. I've been a resident of Appomattox County all my life. And that's when the museum, I talked about doing a satellite museum. There was a little bit of competition for it from other areas in the state. But when Appomattox was selected as a site for the new museum, everybody in the county was excited and became very supportive. And at that time, when it came, the Board of Supervisors committed $15,000 a year for 10 years. And I understand all of those commitments were made. It's been another $15,000 contribution in 2022, and another $15,000 contribution in 2023. And I've held all my life, and I've never known this county to fail any commitment or anything that they've made or any pledge that they've made. So I'm here tonight to plead with you, pledge with, beg for you, to do the right thing and reconsider the actions that you took at your March 5th meeting. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Jamerson. Yes, sir. You say your funding goal was half a million dollars, $500,000. Yet I seem to remember that last summer sometime, you reported to the Appomattox Committee, Museum Committee, that you had pledges out there for over $800,000. What happened to that?
I don't remember any commitment like that.
And I also remember one of your fellow members, Mr. Wad Aitken, saying that, you know, one board can't hold- saying that, you know, one board can't hold a commitment to another board. And we don't have a written contract like we do with the Appomattox end. And we are facing, we have a written, through the EDA, we have where we, you know, pay them. But we don't have a similar contract with the museum anywhere that I know of. And this year, we are facing hefty revenue loss. And so we will reconsider, but you have to realize that, you know, do we fund the social services, or a social, an item that benefits the poor? Or do we, you know, fund the museum? Any questions from the Board of Supervisors? Mr. Wolfkill?
When I was campaigning, I knocked on 1,100 doors. I spoke to very nearly 600 people. Fully 30% of those people are struggling to pay their bills. Some of the houses I visited, the porches were literally falling off the house. Cars in the driveway. One lady talked to me for half an hour crying. She couldn't get her car fixed to go to work. We have to be absolutely diligent about what we do with the taxpayer money. We love the museum. I love the museum. My family goes there a lot. But is it the proper use of taxpayer money to fund a non-government function? I can't, I can't ask people to use their taxpayer money. We're struggling to fund the sheriff. We're struggling to fund the schools. We're struggling to fund other things. It's wonderful to have the Civil War Museum here and other entities. Maybe they need to step up their own fundraising. It is not a fundamental responsibility of a government. And that's just where my heart is. And I'm sorry if that makes people angry at me, but I have to stick to my convictions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm in total favor of supporting the Appomattox County Civil War Museum. And I take issue that we're going to say, "We can't fund this museum because we need to take care of those in poverty." I don't see that happening. So I don't like to hear that as a scapegoat for Appomattox. You're always going to have people in poverty. But I feel like Appomattox is known for their history. And if the citizens of the community can give $500,000, it looks like the Board of Supervisors here in Appomattox should be willing to give our support as well. It is a nonprofit. It's not taking away from poor people. So I don't, let's not make that argument that we can't do it because of the poor people in Appomattox. I've worked with poor people all of my life here in Appomattox. And so, like I said, I totally disagree. Appomattox is known for its history. That's a, that's a big part of who we are.
I disagree with that.
And how we identify. And Appomattox, Appomattox is able to support this museum. That's my personal feeling. And I'm not, I'm just addressing my feelings.
Understand. And since this is an action item, this was a, you know, more information to enter through our budget discussions later on. We'll take your comments. We appreciate your comments, Mr. Jameson. And Dr. Havers, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah. For the time, thank you for allowing us to make this case again. I know many of you, I've stood in front of you and argued the very same things that Reverend Jones is arguing. We believe we're an asset to this community. Many people in the room tonight are here from our advisory council to support Mr. Jameson's pitch to maintain the money. We bring a lot of things to the community. Any museum, wherever you are in this country, indeed around the world, relies on local support as well as money through the law. And this is an example of the community through the Board of Supervisors supporting us. We've worked pretty diligently the last two or three years to reengage with the community, to bring more things of interest to the community. Cultural things, but also things that bring tourists here. It's very difficult to say, "Don't help the poor, help the museum." And I understand that, and poverty is a serious issue. But tax revenues come from a number of sources. And we do our best as an economic engine in Appomattox County to bring people who would not otherwise come here, to linger here, to go to restaurants, to go to hotels, to come to the museum, absolutely. People who may not otherwise stay as long. So there's a head and a heart dimension to this. The head piece says we help with revenue here. And we do pretty aggressive fundraising as well. Do not rely completely on the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors. But it's a community endeavor. If the community didn't want us here, they wouldn't have raised the amount of money they have. And this is a generous, as Mr. Jameson said, this was a generous kickstarter to that appeal two or three years ago that the county Board of Supervisors provided. So we would hope you can honor that pledge. We are more engaged with the community than I think we have been for quite some time. So I understand tough budget decisions. Have to do that every day. Some of them are no fun. But I do believe that this is something worth supporting. And as I said, we do bring people here who otherwise may not come. As Reverend Jones says, Appomattox is known for history. It's very easy to come to the park and then move on. Museum's another reason to linger. And we've worked with local businesses to encourage them, "Go to this restaurant. Make a weekend of it. Stay at the inns and suites," all these sort of things, as well as the cultural dimension.
And Dr. Havers, I appreciate those comments. I'm glad you brought up the revenue piece of this because cigarette tax, food tax, occupancy tax for the hotel, all goes to the town. And I don't see the town supporting it that I know of. So if I go wide to the county, there is no tax revenue to the county. But I appreciate your remarks.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll take consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. I would like to convey that I'm in complete agreement with Reverend Jones in what he, in the dialogue that he gave. I remember when the museum was first talked about coming to Appomattox. And Mr. Jameson was right. Everybody was up in arms. It was beautiful. We loved it. Something has, is happening in Appomattox that's only positive in. And ever since then, I, for one, and I think everybody knows that, I have supported the museum. And I will continue to support the museum. Because I, number one, we said we was. Now, I understand past boards, that doesn't mean anything really. But, but to me, I take it right to the heart that we're going to support it. I think it's, it's brought upon us as supervisors of this county to do what's in the best interest of the county. Now, sure, that's always a shortfall. And always will be, I am sure of that. But one thing I think that we have got to rely on, and that is keeping, keeping the museum here as an attraction, as a tourism attraction, and amongst other amenities that they provide. So I appreciate the board members, you, I know one time you was on that board. I appreciate the board members that are on there, the job that they do. And I just hope that they will continue, and I hope this board will open up its heart to this and their mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. We'll take all these comments and consideration for our next budget session. Because I don't want to delay tonight. Next up is Mr. Philip Jameson, another Jameson, president of the Appomattox Railroad Festival, to present their request for funding.
Thank you. You just met my father, and he says he's been here his whole life. It's 90 years and what, three weeks? So my guess is he's been here longer than anybody else in this room. And if you add us together, it's 160, 150 something years of living here in Appomattox. Anyway, my name is Fuller Jameson. I live at 2594 Country Club Road. I'm on here on behalf of the Appomattox Railroad Festival. I'm the president. They voted me as a member of the board in February, and then they voted me president in March. So I haven't had a lot of time to get behind, everything is here. But I would first like to thank the board for that past support. I think, as far as I know, the board has supported the railroad festival every year. That they've had it for 50-some years, I guess now. So I certainly appreciate that. It draws, well, it draws thousands of people. I think it's probably the single largest event that happens in Appomattox that the community gets around for time of fellowship and brings people in from the outside. I think what people might not understand is it takes literally 1,000 hours of volunteer help to make that happen. Right now, our board, we have eight people on that board. We're trying to recruit. Our numbers are going down. The workload's coming up. So we're doing some things this year to get more participation to help with that. We've requested $10,000, which was the same as we requested last year. Last year, our expenses, we cost us about $70,000 to put on the railroad festival. And we had fundraisers, I think we got $10,000 from the town, $10,000 from the county, around $20,000 from vendors. And we did fundraising, raised over $45,000. That's mainly people from this community. So we would ask that you honor the request that we've made for $10,000. I appreciate your time. And I want to note that of everybody that's presented, I'm about a tenth of the time it took them to go. So I should get favorable consideration just from my weakness.
Any board member have questions, Mr. Jameson?
Just appreciate the, the volunteerism that you all do. And you're right, that's one of the biggest things this county has ever had.
And I hope you keep your announcer. He does a darn good job.
The nacho cheese man? We're working on that. Thank you.
All righty, next is our citizen public comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen should be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. Looks like we have three people. First up is Ms. Linda Mays. When you come up, give your name and address for the board record.
Linda Mays, 2896 Snaps Mill Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My concern tonight is this building where we're sitting. I taught in this building for almost 20 years until we moved to the new elementary school. I always hoped this building would find a new purpose. When CVCC moved into the wing down this way, that was a good thing. When Carver Price Museum renovated the original rooms, I was delighted. And most recently, when the renovations began for the career and technical education, I thought that was going to be a very good thing. But now it's my understanding the gentleman who leased this building is bankrupt. My concern, gentlemen, what happens now? Are there outstanding bills which are unpaid? The county still owns this building, so are there large bills that we're going to be responsible for? Are there grants that'll have to be repaid if we don't finish this job? What is their relationship or partnership with that gentleman? Finally, this room that we're meeting in is beautiful. It's been renovated and it's gorgeous. It doesn't look anything like when I was teaching over here, believe me. It's a very good place for your Board of Supervisors meetings. My suggestion is to remain here and save the county several million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Okay, next we have Anthony Train Johnson.
Hello, my name's Anthony Johnson, 4535 Stonewall, Virginia, in Concord. I'd like to first off introduce myself. I am a media outlet, if you will. I'm an unbiased media outlet. I'm not here to cast aspersions or speculate, but I've been asked by the people to look into some of these things. And I just have a point of emphasis to speak on that I've gotten from the people. And that's just moving forward with transparency in the moves that we may make in the future. I know you guys are in a polarized position as leaders on the board. And I also like to thank you for what you do. As leaders, it comes with a lot of responsibility. And I'd like to thank Mr. Hinkle for personally inviting me here. But I also want to take time to talk about this small town. And what separates us from Capitol Hill is that we're a small town, we're a proud town, but we can move as one. And we can move as one as long as we're transparent with every decision that we make in this room. Now, I do understand that all decisions will not fare well with everyone. I'd like to take time to thank Mr. Jameson for speaking on the Civil Museum. Because I did, as I did my homework, seeing that the number zero beside funding for the Civil Museum definitely bothered me. Because I do believe that we have to fund our heritage in this town, our heritage, our legacy here, our history here, built the life of this town. And seeing zero funding on that has bothered me some. No matter how we volleyball this, on who should help or who should do what, I think we need to come as one. Is that also? I also do believe that within, you know, and especially when speaking on something like that, if we have transparency, if we do say, okay, we want to help the poor out instead of fund to the Civil Museum. But can we show ways that we've been helping the poor out? Can we show ways that we've been improving our community and improving the poverty around here? Because if you don't, that statement respectfully, sir, can seem a little invalid, with all due respect. And also, I'd like to take time to slightly speak on membership or decisions made with personnel decisions. I would like to take time to give people their proper send-off that I don't think they got. So I'd like to thank Ms. Bonnie Tilston for her contributions to the community. Also, Tricia Humbles, and also Mr. Bobby Wingfield. I feel like these people deserve a proper send-off if they're not involved with their normal role in our community. And I just think that we all can just move as one and just be as transparent as possible with future decisions. And I think that would definitely halt a lot of confusion. But thank you for your time, and I will be keeping up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have listened to several of your talks and find them interesting. And professionally done. All right, next up, we have Reverend Paul Michael Raymond, request to speak.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Michael Raymond, 2397, Appomattox, Virginia. I do not envy your position today. It's a very emotional thing that you need to face. I do want to begin by thanking Mr. Jameson. He is a gentleman's gentleman. He has pretty much single-handedly built Appomattox. And he has been very generous to us. I also want to let you know that I'm not speaking from a position of ignorance. I was on the Appomattox Railroad Committee for over 10 years, so I know what they go through. But I do have an issue with some of these nonprofit institutions. Many of them, as I spoke to two of the individuals who left here just moments ago, I asked them if they were donor-based, and they said, yes, they were. And most nonprofits, they weren't even a nonprofit as of yet, most nonprofits are donor-based. And donor-based nonprofits should be able to raise their funds. I happen to have a nonprofit here in Virginia. I've been in here for 27 years. And we didn't even use a bank. We didn't use any kind of asking of money. We just monetized. We had a donor base. We begged. And we were able to do what we were able to do. So there is an issue with using taxpayer money. And I commend Mr. Wolfkill, of course, and I understand Mr. Jones, your position. And as I said before, you have a very difficult place. You are in a very difficult place. You don't want to defund the Confederate museum. Because when I moved here, there was nothing. There was nothing. But now there's things, and this is a wonderful thing. But we have to be careful to balance. But we have to be careful to balance, because when you dicker about whether or not to fund the sheriff's department because he needs two other deputies, or to buy a, to fund the fire department or with the machinery there, and yet you're very willing to listen to requests for money from donor-based individuals, I find that very disturbing. So I'm asking you to consider your decisions when you do decide. I know for a fact that several years ago, with a different board, many of you were on the board, you were funding at the amount of six thousand dollars a year, the Wolf Bay. That's a private institution. Why would you give taxpayer money to a theater company when they were already monetizing their institution? Thank you for your attention. I appreciate it. These are things that you're going to have to grapple with, and I am just so glad I am not where you are. God bless you all.
Thank you, Reverend. All right. Is there anyone out there, citizen, who would like to say something but didn't get here in time to sign up on the sheet?
I would, Mr. Chairman.
All righty.
Rod Stanley, twelve oh seven Lemonbury Drive, Pliny Mountain District. What Mr. Jamerson spoke about, that's the reason I want to speak. All transparency. I worked at the American Civil War Museum for six years as an education supervisor, retiring in twenty-one. I then began to volunteer there, helping the education team and taking care of the heritage garden. I then became chairman of the museum's advisory board, composed of eighteen individuals from the area, many from Appomattox County. I then also became a board member of the museum. So now I'm putting in as many hours as I was when I got a paycheck, but now I'm not getting a paycheck. So you went, oh, what the heck is that for? Well, it's because I personally so strongly believe in the mission of that museum, which is basically to help instill the knowledge of the public in the causes, the course, and in my mind, the most important, the consequences of the Civil War. Now, when I say the public, there's an aspect to that that really gets to my heart, and that's the small public, our students, our children, this county's children. Nothing made me smile more than when I led a school group and I saw that child also, yeah. That light bulb moment goes off, and that child got something that I said. Could have been something life-changing. A high school teacher here in Appomattox got with me as part of the Appomattox Advisory Board and proposed to me a twelve-year program for our children. First grade all the way through twelfth grade. Each year, those kids go to our museum and learn about our history. The most, outside the American Civil War, the most important four years of our history surpasses World War II. Each year, that child would learn a little bit more about the intricacies of the war. Could you imagine, at the end of the twelfth year, the knowledge base that child would have? That is not going to happen because of your failure to invest into that museum. Because part of that fifteen thousand dollars a year was solely so that our children can go to that museum for free and that the school district doesn't have to pay for transportation. And it totally saddens me, your decision, your tough decision.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. It was a pleasure working for you, with you those years. We had lots of fun there at the...
We did.
All righty, next up.
I'm Jody Thomas, four twenty-eight Snaps Mill Road. I'm not a good public speaker, so I'll get through this pretty fast. I'm talking about the museum. They provide employment to some local residents here, but they also purchase from local businesses, which wasn't discussed, which is why I asked to speak. They do, you know, like True Value, Jamerson, Downtown Jefferson Galleries. So they could choose to purchase outside of Appomattox County. They can get things online. But they're choosing to put their money back into Appomattox County. They talked about the Angel Tree, and they talked about the children's thing where they do like a living history. But I just wanted you, when you make that decision, to consider those things as well. And if you're talking about funding for non-government items, I ask that you use that same lens when you're considering everything, which unfortunately would mean the railroad festival. So if you're using that same lens, consider that with everything you're making a decision on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next up, we have Mr. William Cook, President of Jamerson Lewis Construction. Requesting a period of board board update on the courthouse renovation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. It's a pleasure to present to you all this evening the sixty-five percent design for the adaptive reuse of the old courthouse. I have Mr. Jacob Caldwell with me as well, sorry. To just go over some of the general scope and scale of project. But before we do that, we'd like to give you an update. Earlier this year, we entered into a comprehensive agreement for the design and construction for the adaptive reuse. Currently, we sit at sixty-five percent drawings, on budget, on schedule. We have obtained our land disturbance permit from the county, which allows us to start moving earth and do some of the pre-development activities once things are all confirmed and design is approved. We intend to start construction, have a building permit by early May, start construction before June first of this year, and have the facility open to the county for use in July of twenty-five. So with that, turn it over to Jacob for his design comments.
Good evening. I'll just give you a quick update. Kind of a thirty-thousand-foot looking-down level, not too detailed tonight. I know you guys have a lot to be trying to get through. This is about the addition that's going to go on the left side of the building. A small addition. It'll be a new public entry, will be fully handicapped accessible, something that the building currently does not have. A stair up to that main level, also an elevator and a small storage room. The design of the new addition will complement the existing building. Will be brick to match, similar style, similar windows, same roof as you have on the existing building there now. Entry will be from the left, again, where most of your people come up to go to the courthouse, Treasures Building, that kind of thing, and improved wayfinding for the citizens as well. On the upper level, the green area is a two-story space there, giving that some natural light coming in. As you, excuse me, going the wrong way here. So as you move from the green space over towards your right, there are some public toilets. And then also, in the front left of the existing building, there will be an office space that could be leasable if you should desire to do that. The main board of supervisors' room is shown there in the middle. You guys, of course, would sit at the bottom of the page looking towards the top with a small AV area at the back. Moving further to the right, bottom right of the existing building, there's a small conference room so that you can go into discussions there. And then also a toilet at the back, top right, and a little break room. The addition here is shown on the left. As you can see, it's very much like what's there. Brick, same windows, same roof, same style architecturally to complement the existing building. You're coming from the parking lot kind of behind the Treasures Building. This is the view that you would see the courthouse being to your left. This is currently what the space looks like. The county has worked to clear out. I believe there's a stage and some existing seating in there. You can see there's a lot of work that needs to be done at this point, but it is cleared out to kind of give you an idea of the state that it's in now. And then kind of use your imagination here, give you a little view of what it could look like, fully renovated, ready for you guys to use. It's about twelve hundred square feet total addition, and then, of course, the renovation of the existing new MVP systems throughout and new finishes similar to what you see here. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this point.
Any questions, board members? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the update and look forward to completion.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have Mr. David Rowe with Bankers Insurance, has requested a period before the board to discuss the county's health insurance plan.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Adams. Looks like he has me pulled up here. There we go. I'm David Rowe with Bankers Insurance. I assist the county administration with their health insurance program. It's been interesting to listen to the folks before me tonight. Unfortunately, it seems like every community I work with, everyone is struggling with budget right now. And unfortunately, the information I'm going to bring tonight is and ask for some additional funding. But I hope I'm able to put that in some perspective about what we do and why we do it here in Appomattox. Okay, so what, I think we have two new board members since the last time I made this presentation in 2021. So a little bit of a historical perspective about what we do and why we do what we do for our health insurance here in the county. Back in 2017, we used to buy our health insurance with our school division. We were fully insured with Piedmont at that time, and we made the decision to separate from our school division standalone, and we started offering a program through the state called the Local Choice Health Program. And we started that program in October of 2017. We ran a short planned year until July one of 2018, and then synced up with our fiscal year beginning at that time. I wanted to share with you, and if anyone who's in the private sector, I hope you'll appreciate what I'm getting ready to share with you. I wanted to give you all a list of our renewal increases that we've experienced since we joined the state's program called the Local Choice. That's a little bit hard for me to see from here, but in July one of 2018, the first year that we stood on our own, we received a five-point-two percent rate increase. July one of 2019, we remained flat, no increase in cost. July one of twenty, July one of 2020, a four-point-three percent increase. In July of 2021, a one percent decrease. And for the last three years, we have had a tougher level of increase than we've seen previously. July of 2022, an eight-point-seven percent increase. Last year, a nine-point-nine percent increase. And then the proposed renewal increase for FY25, July one of 2024, is a ten percent increase. What I want to share with you is, over the past seven years, one average, we've experienced a five-point-three percent increase per year. And again, for those of you that have to buy your health insurance, maybe for a small employer on the private market, I think you know that that type of a seven-year average is, is, no increase is ever welcome, but it's going to be smaller because we buy through the state. I thought it was important to share this this year. And I know that's kind of hard to see, but what we were able to do, you all have less than a hundred employees on your plan. You're what we call pool-rated. The pool that you're a part of. I heard someone from Nelson speak earlier. Nelson's in the program. Most of your folks, your school division, just left this program last year, hoping they'll come back to it again this coming year. But the smaller communities are in this program around the state. You all are part of that. When this, when your program is rated, Anthem and the state, look at how all groups in the program perform that are similar in size to you all. And the only way they look at your experience is, were you better than or worse than the pool? We did not have a good year this year. We were able to get some data from Anthem that typically they don't share with us for groups your size. And what I had my underwriter do, if you all had been experience-rated for this upcoming renewal, and again, I know that's hard to see, but if you look at the number on the far right-hand side, we would have experienced, again, had we been experience-rated, about a fourteen-point-three percent increase. So by being in the pool, we got a ten percent increase. I understand no increase is ever welcome, but would have been worse if we were experience-rated. Why it's important for Appomattox to remain with the state. You all don't go out and procure your own retirement plan. You're part of the Virginia retirement system. Buying with the state. The state buys benefits for about a hundred and forty thousand employees. We have, I said ninety-two on there. We actually, I think, have ninety-four employees on our plan. We can't go out and get our own benefits as inexpensively as we buy them through the state. We get lower administrative fees, reinsurance costs, trends, no state premium tax, and no ACA insurer fees. We also have pooling of our pharmacy and our dental cost. So Anthem and the state don't look at what we spend on pharmacy or dental costs. They look at what the whole program incurs. We get our pro-rata share back. Significantly lower than average renewal increases by being in the program. In summary, even though our 2024 renewal, FY25 renewal, is higher than we have seen, on average, experience from the Local Choice program, partnering with the state and the Local Choice program does allow Appomattox County to deliver the best benefits for our employees at the lowest cost available year over year. And I will say, we do have good benefits here in the county. I was meeting with Tippie and Mrs. Adams earlier. These benefits are very important to our employees, and it's a big part of their total compensation package. Any questions for me on that?
Mr. Chairman? The ten percent increase that we're looking at this year?
Yes, sir.
What's that in dollars?
Pardon me?
What is that in dollars?
Right at eighty-six thousand new dollars. It's a lot of money.
And what's the total package?
What's the total cost of the whole program? Today, employer costs are eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. With the increase, would go to nine forty-five three sixty, if we continue to do what we're doing today.
Could you say your last statement again?
Yes, sir. You asked me what those new dollars would be?
Right.
Eighty-six thousand fifty-two dollars. We're currently, the county is currently funding eight-hundred-and-fifty- We're currently, the county is currently funding $859,308,000. If we add the $86,052 to that, new amount for the county, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, $945,360.
And then you said, there was, there was a tag on the end of that, if we keep doing what we're doing or something like that?
If we continue to sponsor the same benefit program we're sponsoring today, just if we don't make any changes.
There's 100, roughly 100 employees?
94, yes, sir.
94. Is, is there things we can look at?
The only other option we would have, you, I mean, you all are here-
I'm just asking.
Yeah. You, you all are here in Lynchburg. Piedmont made an announcement, they're exiting the group benefit market. So the only thing we could do that would bring a good network of doctors and hospitals to our employees would be to go to Anthem on a fully insured basis. We're much better off to buy Anthem through the state like we're doing now. Does that make sense?
So to make a change would cost more?
Yes, sir. That is, I have not put it out to bid yet, but I've been doing this a long time. Anthem, fully insured, is going to come in higher than what we have for the state.
Now, this is going to continue to make me unpopular. How does the insurance programs that the county benefits enjoy compare to the insurance benefits of the taxpayers supporting the taxes?
I don't live in Appomattox, sir. I have no idea. You all offer a very mo- moderate, middle-of-the-road plan offering to your employees.
Okay.
I can tell you that from other localities I work with.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else for me?
Anything else? Just not. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your update on insurance. Next, we have Ms. Melissa Lucy, CEO of Horizon Behavioral, has requested to appear before the board to provide an update on services.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Ms. Adams for allowing me to come and speak with you this evening. You've had a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to try to talk really fast, but if I talk too fast, then you can stop me. Please do so. Again, thank you for having me here. It sounds like you all had a very busy meeting. I'm going to read one thing to you, and then I won't read again, then I'm going to give you other information from the PowerPoint. You all do have the PowerPoint in front of you in the blue folder that has Horizon on it. I don't see it up there, so I just want to make sure you have it to follow with me. Our vision is to provide behavioral healthcare services that are accessible, consumer-centered, cost-effective, and outcome-based. Our mission is to support and promote the health, independence, and self-worth of individuals and families in central Virginia by providing a continuum of community-based treatment, prevention, early intervention, and after-care services for persons affected by mental health, intellectual disabilities, substance use, and co-occurring disorders. On the next page, you will see a portfolio of services. The things I want to point out on those portfolios is that we have multiple services under each portfolio. So, for example, under emergency services, we have our women's recovery, we have mobile crisis, forensic services, just to name a few. So I don't want you to see those portfolios and think that's all we provide. The other thing I will point out there is that CSB's community services boards are only required to provide case management and emergency services. Horizon does not take that stance. We actually provide what our community needs and requests. So you will see a multitude of other services that we are not mandated to provide, but that are needed based on feedback and requests, et cetera, from the communities that we serve. On the next page, you're going to see services that are a direct impact of hos- of keeping individuals out of the hospital and into the community. Why is that important? I'm sure, sure all of you have seen that we are in a vet crisis in the state of Virginia and actually throughout the country. So it is very important that we have services for individuals that are considered high need, are very serious cases that are in the community that can prevent them from having to go to the hospital, but also maintain them in a safe manner. On the next page, it's a quote from a Horizon client. Again, I said I wouldn't directly read to you anymore, so I'm not going to do that, but I do encourage you to read the quote. These are real quotes, they're not doctors, they're directly from our clients. When the client allows us to put the names, we do so. When they say they want us to put their quote but not actually put their name, you will see the term Horizon client, so that's why you don't see their name. On the next page, this is a list of our evidence-based programming. Why is evidence-based programming important? Because that allows us to go after big grants, which I will talk to you a little bit about later, some grants that I have actually went after for the communities that we serve and have been successful in achieving. Those grants typically SAMSA grants, HERSA grants, will require us to give them data to prove that we need this and that we're going to be successful, and evidence-based practices allow us to do that. The other important thing about evidence-based practices is it's proven, that will, it will statistically work. So that means what we're doing for the clients has a proven history statistically that it is successful and that it will work for that individual. On the next page, you'll see two additional quotes from Horizon's client. And again, I'm not going to read them to you, but I do encourage you to go back and look because that's your individuals and citizens in your community giving feedback on the services that they are receiving. On the next page, you'll see the 2023 outcomes. These are some outcomes that we're proud to present, and I want to point out that we not only track treatment outcomes, but also our community engagement, because again, we want to meet clients where they're at, we want to make sure that we're out there in the community, letting them know about our services. You've heard a lot of people talk about knocking on doors during the pandemic. We actually went after a grant where we knocked on doors. We actually gave them care packages, encouraged them to come into our center, and it was very successful, so we do continue to do some of that. On the next page, you'll see additional 2023 outcomes. One thing I do want to point out here is that 679 individuals received primary care after coming into our admissions department. That is unique to Horizon. That is not a mandate throughout the state that we had to do. I took some step Virginia dollars, actually put a primary care doctor in our admissions area so that when a client comes in, the day that they come in, if they don't have a primary care provider, they will get it. They will not, that doctor will not follow them forever, so it is a mandate, but it gives us enough time. Let's say they have high blood pressure, but they're not being treated. That doctor can provide them high blood pressure medication, we can assist them in getting that, and then we will also link them to a long-term primary care doctor. That is unique to Horizon. On the next page, you'll see FY '23 outcomes, additional outcomes. And I just want to point out that in our multi-system MST, 97% of the youth with improved family relations and a network of support. That's important because that means that they have a better support system to ensure that they stay healthy and stay into treatment. On the next page, this is about your community, and what I want to point out here is with your contribution, the average, average uninsured client receives a continuum of care for more services, for additional services such as case management services at the typical rate of $326.50 per month, outpatient therapy at an average rate of $292 a month, and you're getting all of this for as low as $69.66 a month for all of those services. So you're getting a very good rate for what you provide for your community. On the next page, this is a list of our prevention services, so you heard me talk about earlier, that we don't just want to treat the person, we want to also provide prevention services, and this is a list of services that we provide to the community in a preventative nature. On the next page, I told you I was going to tell you about some of the grants that we've went after. This is a grant to benefit homeless individuals. The thing that I want to point out here is that we are in target to reach 245 transitional age youth, age 12 to 25, who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless over a period of five years, and our program is right on top target to exceed these goals. The other thing I want to make note of is that 2023 fiscal year numbers underrepresent the program's success as they only began accepting referrals in December of '22, so we are actually doing much better than it even looks like we are. And this is a grant that we went after to provide services to the community. It is a SAMSA grant, so it allows us to provide additional services that we do not get funding for. On the next page, permanent supportive housing, this is an additional grant that Horizon went after. This provides just what it says, permanent housing for individuals who have a serious mental illness. They get it for the, for their life, so once they're accepted into the program, we do not kick them out of the program. We pay for all of their services for their housing. We also have funding that gets them started. So if they're homeless and they don't have the funding to have a couch, a bed, we provide that, pots and pans, et cetera. And then we also continue paying for their rent for their life, for the life of the individual. We just recently requested and sent a detailed plan submitting to the department for additional funding to expand the program because the program started with 30 slots, and we are almost at capacity. On the next page, this is a quote from a client who is actually a permanent supportive housing individual. And then on the next page, this is a program that works directly with law enforcement as our crisis intervention team, and it's actually near and dear to my heart. Actually started at, I had, at Horizon prior to being in this role and actually had to fight quite heavily to get in our community. We work directly with all of the law enforcement in each of our catchment areas, and it, I think it is very good for the individuals in the community as well as for the community itself. On the next page is our crisis receiving center. You heard me talk a little bit about this. Last time I was here, I just wanted to give you an update on that. We've completed all steps with the architects and have been through most of the procurement steps for construction. Once all construction steps are completed, which I'm expecting to be in the near future, we will then move to start the renovations, and we're hoping to have the facility open within 12 to 18 months after renovate, after that starts. On the next page, the big thing that I want to point out to you is that Horizon is celebrating its 55th anniversary, and we are having an event on April 10. Each of you received an invitation. I would hope to see you there, but if I can't, I totally understand and know you're busy, but it is going to be a good event. We wanted to give back versus an ask. Typically, when we have an anniversary, we do an ask of the community. This time, I did a give. So we're going to have a national presenter. It's free to the community, free to our staff, as well as anybody else in the community. We've been advertising the flyer, and then we'll have a reception from 4:00 to 6:00 as well to celebrate our anniversary. Any questions? I know I threw a lot at you very quick. Told you I was going to try to talk fast. Did I go too fast? I'm sorry if I did. I was trying to be true to my time, sorry.
Excellent presentation, and I, I'm familiar with the CIT program. I don't remember if you or someone else come talk to the FOP in Lynchburg, and I know several officers have gone through the training and the benefit it has for the officers and the citizens alike, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Carter?
No, good, excellent presentation, and glad to, as soon as I digest all this, it's going to be good.
Thank you. My card is in there, so if you have questions, please reach out to me. Susan knows how to reach me as well, Ms. Adams knows how to reach me as well. Sorry, that was a little unfortunate.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, next, Mr. George Almond, representing Antemex County for Habitat for Humane and Manatee, has requested to appear before the board to discuss building fee waiver for a house that is being constructed.
Thank you, and don't let that George Almond get out very often. Keep the telemarketers away. Everybody knows me as Spud, so, you know, stay on the low down with that. We, Appomattox County, just go back. Habitat for Humane, in case somebody doesn't know, you know, that thing being, it's the old simple, this, this and housing for all the people that we can afford to. Habitat uses the monies that they fundraise, that they get from other churches, that they get from local groups, that they get from anyone who will donate it to build these houses at the lowest cost possible. I've been associated with Habitat for 25 years. This house that we are embarking on now will be our house number 23 in the county. We lost a little bit during COVID, we lost a little bit to, here we started to do fundraising. Couple of things, the, the Habitat partners with the family, and those people commit for 300 hours of sweat activity to go into that house. 50 hours can be done by friends and family. The other 250 have to be done by the homeowner and family that's getting that house. We do have a professional contractor, we do do all the professional people. What we do is all the volunteers, let me think what you've been on some of those sites. That's Habitat's goal is to, and you all know how the cost of housing is going. We'll share this with you. The first Habitat house we did, the first one we did, the cost on it was $28,000 to that family, okay? If we get this one built for $150,000, I'll be really happy. So that's a period of 25 years. Over that whole, Habitat has their own bank, so we thank the people over that period of time, and lots of other counties can't say this, we only had to take one house back. Heard of that, 22 houses. So we like that idea. People have done, presently, we have nine that are still paying out because you want to always keep going, and that helps put your funding back in and, and the funding into that. There is a process which they go through. We have applications over social services, and it's a, it's not a lengthy process, but it's made to pick out the people who could use the benefits the most. That, that, that being said, all these people have asked for a lot of money, and I know that. I don't, I don't need your money, I just need you not to charge me some money. I ran some numbers today, the present house that we have, which is the same size that we've always built, we're just aiming in a different direction, turn the floor play around, make something different so they all don't look alike. Be somewhere in the neighborhood of $400 would be the county fees. In the past, the county has waived that fee for Habitat over the last 25 years, so I'm asking that, that you can see a way to waive that fee for us, and that'll help us a little bit to move along with that process.
Well, Spud, I think it's remarkable that you only had one house be possessed in all that time. That is, that speaks for the quality-
Because it's a lot of the, you talk to other county, and each county organization is affiliated with National, but acts separately from National too, so the fact that we managed to do that is pretty cool, I think.
Any questions in board? Mr. Wiskel?
It isn't pertaining to your request, but it is a question that, do you follow up with people living in them, teaching them a little bit about? Some people, when they get into a house, they never owned a house, don't know about-
We do, we have them.
There's some, there's some homes, I live out near Poorhouse Creek Road, and the home's there on Morning Star. There's two houses there, the siding's about ready to fall off the gable ends. So I'm just making a request that maybe you can have somebody stop out there and have a look at that before the siding's gone?
We do if, if those people ask us to.
Or you can't just stop out?
It is, it is their house, you know, and some of them don't, you know, that's a tough thing because I can't, you can't tell a person-
That's right.
-what to do with that house.
That's right.
And we have that come up sometimes. But yeah, there is one house down the aisle, I've heard a couple times, that needs, that needs some adjustment, and we probably can-
Just do a visit.
-address that. But you talked about so many people, you talked through that, were in poverty. It's a lot of people, even single moms, even family groups of six to eight families, these are, this family now is, they have two children.
And they're paying taxes.
And they pay taxes, and they pay, do they do? Part of that house payment-
Yes, property taxes.
-is their taxes, and that grows in there, so that goes down too. So they take care of that. But yeah, we do follow, we also have a finance person that works with them, to kind of work with the family and knowing budgeting and understanding, you know, you got to pay your life, you got to pay your, you know, those things.
There is stuff, yeah.
That's part of what we're happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Almond. Appreciate all your volunteers that work and get that done. Is there a motion to waive?
Also move.
Mr. Carr's moved that we waive the building fees, or second?
Second.
Mr. Jones is seconding. Mr. Wiskel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hepstall?
I vote aye also.
Thank you very much.
Okay, action items. Next is Jay Robinson, Jay Robert Jamerson Memorial Library. Please transfer by consent from the general fund and supplementing to the following. $3,045 for books, $3,104 for audiovisual, $13,500 for furniture, for a total of $19,648 and 51 cents. This budget revision is a local match requirement towards the FY 2024 state aid funding, no local, no, new local funds, oh, new local funds required. Do I have a motion on the- Do I have a motion on the transfer?
So.
Mr. Jones has moved that we transfer nineteen thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter is second. Discussion? Here, no discussion. Mr. Wescall? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
I vote aye also. Motion is carried.
Next is resolution for the desolu-, yeah, dissolution of the Piedmont Alcohol Safety, Mr. Wescall? Ah, excuse me, yes, ninety R per pint, Mr. Wescall. All right.
And I'll say.
Mr. Carter is second. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman? So the behavior of mental health services are not being voted on?
No, just what Mr. Wescall listed. I believe the mental health was, this is our, this is our purpose as well.
The, this was new money that just came in and needed to be used and it had specific categories that it could go to.
So do we, okay, so we're going to certain categories, but-
That's all we could do tonight.
Okay. So my question is, the behavior of mental health services, is that voted on or not different?
Would you like me to address that?
Ms. Adams, would you address that, please?
Yes, Sir Reverend Jones, what that is, is when we initially received the ARPA funding, we tried to categorize things that would fit into the criteria that the federal government provided us with and that was one of them that we thought that we could take those services out because of the CSA program, but we have to prove that it's above and beyond the operations of the program and that's, that's the part we're having difficulty with. So if we can identify why there's a difference as a reason of COVID, then we can certainly charge it back to that program.
So my question is, the three hundred thousand dollars, community-based mental health substance use disorder program to deliver evidence, excuse me, evidence-based psychotherapy, crisis support service medications for opid use disorder and/or recovery support, school-based social emotional support and other mental health services, this would be a reimbursement for services provided? So I'm just trying to understand, okay, we're voting on certain things to be funded?
Yes, that's-
And this, and this particular project, that this is something different?
We put that there as a placeholder.
Okay.
What we're having difficulty is trying to prove that that was above and beyond the services that would be offered on a routine basis because we can't supplant funds into our operational fund.
Okay.
So that's the reason.
Yeah, so why is it three hundred thousand there? I'm trying to understand.
We just put it there as a placeholder because we thought, oh, okay, we can look at our CSA because that's one of our largest calls for mental health.
So we may be able to pay it out of some other-
We're hoping to be able to reimburse ourselves. We've just got to prove, that's why we've got it there as a placeholder until we can determine whether it will be an eligible expense or not.
Okay, thank you.
I guess another way to put it, Ms. Adams, I understand that this was kind of like when the ARPA committee met, this was like wish list of projects we could possibly fund.
Back then, not this part. Yes.
And what we're, what we're doing is approving, yes, we can to the fund. Mr. Wescall's motion. Mr. Wescall?
This was new money that just came because of something that ARPA did, but it had a very narrow place that you could use it. And all these things were really important anyway.
Any further discussion? All right, call for roll call. Mr. Wescall?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
I vote aye also.
All right, next is the resolution of dissolution. Say that three times.
Yeah, I'd like to explain that.
For the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Action Program. Attached for the board's consideration is resolution of dissolution of the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Program. Moving forward, the South Side Virginia ASAP will serve the counties previously under the jurisdiction of the Piedmont ASAP. Staff recommends that we adopt attached resolution of dissolution and two, appoint representatives to the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Board Policy. Ms. Adams, would you like to explain that?
I'll try. We've had representation, Mr. Wilson Staples represented the county on the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action, the VASAP program, and it was located in Hornfield, Virginia. They've decided now that they're going to actually dissolve and you do have a copy of their resolution of dissolution in your packet. They would like for Appomattox, those counties that were in the VASAP to join the new region, which would be the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program. The location of that office is in Halifax, Virginia. So I did reach out to the director and they're going to try to move within the region and maybe have a meeting in each locality. They did say that they would reimburse for mileage and they meet quarterly. So at this time, they're asking that Appomattox adopt a resolution since the, the main office has and that's just to make, it's a formality type of measure at this point because they are dissolving. We don't really have a choice of whether they dissolve or not. And then at that point, we would be adopting a resolution to join the, the VASAP in South Side Virginia. But they, they are asking for representation from Appomattox County. That's, that's something that you can take into consideration for the next couple of months because the actual dissolution won't take place till end of May.
And did they, I noticed you were going to ask them what the requirements for appointment would be and did you respond to them on that yet?
I did. They said the term limit is three years to serve in that capacity. They meet quarterly and it's held on the fourth Thursday of January, April, July and October. They do try to adhere to this schedule. They do provide mileage reimbursements and no other compensation is allowed by their bylaws. So they said since COVID, they've had their meetings in Halifax, but they're going to make every effort to try to move it throughout the region. So I think we had talked about possibly being a recovering alcoholic or anything, but that's not a criteria to serve on this board.
And neither is being in line for us for, well, I think that's why Wilson was on it.
But it's, it's not a criteria, it's just who we appointed.
And we need two?
I think we just need one.
Just need one?
Yeah.
All right, so I give you something about for the next quarter. The resolutions in the packet. Basically, the resolution, dissolution is like you said, it's a formality. Basically, a resolution, Anamex County Board of Supervisors established lien by joint action of the Board of Supervisors of the counties Brunswick, Buckingham, Charlotte, Cumberland, Halifax, Lunenburg, Mecklenburg, Prince Edward and the council of the town of South Boston and the membership of the Regional Policy Board of the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, VASAP, to serve the region composed of these counties and towns, or those counties and towns. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia, in the interest of highway safety, is provided for probation, education, rehabilitation of persons charged with violations of section eighteen dot two dash two sixty-six of the Code of Virginia and whereas the General Assembly of Virginia has by statute codified as Virginia Code, section eighteen dot two dash two seven one, paragraph H, provided any county, city, town or combination thereof may establish and operate alcohol safety action programs in connection with highway safety and each program shall operate under the direction of a local independent policy board chosen in accordance with procedures approved and propagated by the Commission on VASAP. Whereas, section fifteen dot two dash thirteen hundred of the Code of Virginia, joint exercise of powers by political subdivisions, authorizes local units of government to exercise the powers and privileges jointly for the operation of a multiple jurisdictional venture and whereas the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Program, which formerly serviced the counties of Amelia, Appomattox, Buckingham, Charlotte, Cumberland, Lunenburg, Nottaway and Prince Edward, has been dissolved effective May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of the counties of Brunswick, Buckingham, Charlotte, Cumberland, Halifax, Lunenburg, Mecklenburg, Prince Edward and the council of the town of South Boston have established and do operate the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, which is a regional safety action program in connection with highway safety and the Commission on VASAP has approved and propagated procedures for the Policy Board of Regional Alcohol Safety Action Program to be reconstitution, reconstituted. Now therefore, in accordance to the procedures approved and propagated by the Commission on VASAP and pursuant to the authority granted by the Board of Virginia Code fifteen, Code section fifteen dot two dash fourteen eleven and the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County hereby resolves that the county of Appomattox continue in participation in the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, VASAP, which is established for the purpose of providing, as ordered by the courts and jurisdictions, to be served probation, education, prevention and rehabilitation services. Adopted by the Board of Supervisors, Appomattox County on the eighteenth day of March, twenty twenty-four, if you gentlemen so vote, is there a motion?
So the-
Mr. Carter's moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is seconded. Discussion?
Must the representative be on the Board of Supervisors or it's just someone from the county?
Someone, someone from the county.
But it's our duty to find that person? Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right, this being a resolution requires a roll call vote. Mr. Wescall?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
And I vote aye also. Resolution is approved.
Good, good reading that.
Yeah, it was difficult. Next is a request from the registrar regarding the June dual primary. Patricia Morton, registrar, has requested the board's consideration to move the location of the June seventeenth Board of Supervisors meeting. The dual primary is being held on Tuesday, June eighteenth in the Board of Supervisors meeting room. Ms. Morton would like the voting agreement placed on Monday, June seventeenth in preparation for the next day's primary. Staff recommends, see attached email from the register and consider the request to relocate the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on Monday, June seventeenth. What are our options?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
I think it'll take every bit of ten plus minutes, maybe plus or minus a minute to move the necessary equipment to put in for the voting process. Therefore, I'm not in favor of this at all.
Oh.
I actually can't speak to it because I don't know how long it would take to move the stuff.
Mr. Harris, would it be appropriate to have the member of the electoral board, if, if he's willing to provide any thoughts on it? I was going to ask- If you're willing?
Sure.
Sorry, you didn't hear the first part.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make that in the form of a motion that this be declined.
Oh. Is there a second?
Do we want to wait and hear what he says?
No.
No?
I'd appreciate hearing what you had to say.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Mr. Self says and I'd also like to hear what Mr. Shepherd says about moving the equipment. Oh, you can answer, okay.
Lance, if you, if you compare the, what this room looks like today and what we, what it looks like when we vote, you know, there's quite a few things set up. There's the, the voting equipment, the machines and so, we have to move in the tables that people vote on and all of that needs to be arranged. We typically, since we have officers of election here at five o'clock in the morning to get the machines started up and, and all of that, we, we need to have the equipment placed some point the day before. We like to do it by three o'clock or so if we can, see if there's any problems or any issues. It's the last thing we want anywhere is for voters to be coming in here at six o'clock in the morning and I'm sorry, we're not ready yet, you can't vote. We really need for everything to be set up, lined up, make sure everything is working, plugged in at pop the day before, which is why we do that. Now, how fast it could be done after a meeting or after a meeting like this, I'm not sure. But we just typically, every, every move we do and all the arrangements we make are done in the afternoon of the month. So that's, that's why we request.
Any other questions, Mr. Hips?
Has this type of situation ever happened before that the room was occupied by us on the day before? Not that I know of.
Ms. Adams?
It has. If I may speak to it? Mr. Shepherd and I have met today and we talked about it because all of our meetings, you know, are advertised in the paper and the location, so it's a little more difficult to just change the meeting. I asked Mr. Shepherd, since he's at all meetings, if we all volunteered to move everything, could we continue to hold the meeting here that night so that we're not creating any additional confusion and then basically have a checklist if, if you guys will tell us what has to be in place? Since our maintenance staff has started moving the equipment, they're very much aware of pretty much the layout and what it would take, so everybody's willing to pitch in and just try to make it happen that night after the meeting.
How long? How long?
What do you mean?
To do that?
Oh, well, according to Mr. Shepherd, he thought maybe it would only take us about fifteen minutes or so if we all just pitch in and, and take care of it.
That's if the voting machines are already in here?
Well, we want to lock them in the room across the hallway. We would not want them in here while the public-
They ought to be in the building and that's what that is.
Right, yeah, we're just lock them across the hallway. If that would work with you guys, I mean, and you would allow staff to do that, I think we could make it happen.
Yeah, if we touch that kind of, no, I just do it to make sure that, that everything that we're in, locked in and you guys can do it here by the morning, there's no, there is no fire drill running around, trying to fix it.
We can, we can only promise to try to make sure that doesn't happen.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a parliamentary question here. Did Mr. Carter's motion fail for a lack of second or did we pause that to? I, I think if you want to treat it as an act of motion, seek a second. I'll second Mr. Carter's motion.
The motions made by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Hips, that we do not change our meeting venue for the Board of Supervisors meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Mr. Wescall?
So on that meeting, can we say no public comments?
Recommend a short agenda.
A short agenda.
Keep the agenda short. Mr. Wescall?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Stay put for June seventeen. All right, next, economic development. Kojana Incentive Agreement. Please transfer by consent twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund and appropriate to eight one oh five dash six thousand seven special projects to reimburse the EDA for the annual incentive payment to Kojana LLC. This agreement states that the board will vote annually for the distribution of the payment. Staff recommends approval of the EDA's request for reimbursement. This is the seventh year of the ten-year incentive payment. No, new local funds are required.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Jones has made the motion to approve the- Okay, Mr. Jones has made the motion to approve the transfer of the funds. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, a second. Discussion? Mr. Woskell, I see you have questions.
Mr. Chairman, it says new funds are required. Where are they coming from? Twenty-five grand.
It would be out of the general fund. We would supplement it into this line item and pay it out to where most of the EDA.
I understand that, but it says new local funds are required. I guess I need to know what that means.
Okay, that means...
Because a lot of times it says no new funds required.
It has not been appropriated into the FY twenty-four budget, so any funds going into the budget that have not been previously appropriated by motion of the board has to be action of new local funds out of the general fund into operating budget.
But that's different than what we see a lot of times when it's, like I said, when it says no, what's in the general fund? Where does that come from?
Well, that's your reserve fund.
The annual reserve fund or the bank account fund?
It's our bank account fund. It's your reserve fund. We only appropriate out of the general fund, and until this board takes action to appropriate those funds out, they are in the general fund, and they're not designated to any kind of program. They're undesigned funds.
I guess I just don't know the birthplace of the money.
Thanks.
And it's okay, I don't need to.
Well, it would be unspent funds that you've not appropriated out anywhere. So we have a reserve fund that are unspent, undelegated accounts.
Okay.
You got it?
Nope, but it's okay.
I can show you that report if I have to.
Yep. I figured I won't waste our time.
Ms. Adams, have we voted on that?
Yes, sir. Well, you have a...
It was just seconded, we had no discussion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Woskell?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right, next we have the consent agenda, which includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations line item transfers, fund transfer of any item on a consent. Agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order in which they are removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of consent agenda. Is there any items that a supervisor would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter has moved to approve the consent agendas, are seconded. Mr. Hips is seconded. Vote. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Woskell?
Reverend Jones? Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also, consent agenda is approved. Okay, next is the attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no report from the attorney. Administrator's report. Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir, I'd like to remind the attorney.
I actually do have a, I'm so used to doing that, so used to going no report that I forgot I actually have one. Apologies. It's just a quick one. If you recall, last month, we talked about a new lease for Emmanuel Tire, and that's been finalized, and we need a motion. The chairman's already signed it, and Emmanuel Tire's already signed it. There was a question asked about a public hearing. We originally advertised one, but since it's not a lease of a new property, it's just an amendment of an existing lease, there's no need for a public hearing. So we just need a motion that ratifies the signature of the chairman on the Emmanuel Tire lease. We're already operating under it, so it's just a formality of ratifying the signature.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Carter's made the move to ratify the chairman's signature, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Woskell, second. Any further discussion? Questions? All right, roll call vote, Mr. Woskell?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Now, Ms. Adams, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir, you have before you the county administrator's report, and it's pretty extensive. It's got all of the departments in it, so I'd like for you to peruse it, and if you have any questions, you can either contact me later or ask those this evening. There are a couple of things I wanted to point out, though. We've had an odd thing happen with finance. Apparently, there's this process called bank washing. So when we mail a check, somehow someone gets that check and they change the vendor name on it. So we're dealing with an issue, currently dealing with an issue of a check of over twenty thousand dollars. That, it's been, the name was changed on it, and it's been cashed, and we're having to go through the fraud department at the bank and also the local law enforcement. They hope to be able to track it down to the person that actually signed and cashed it, but there's no guarantee. It's not covered on FDIC because the bank's not having financial issues. So I did ask John Spencer this afternoon to just call our Bancorp Insurance, and we found out good news. It could possibly be covered under our insurance if we're not able to recoup those, that money from the fraud investigation. I did talk to the investigator with Wells Fargo today, and he said that it may take up three months to find out if they can recoup that money or not. So I wanted to report that to the board, because we are looking at other options now. Although we have security checks, we've got everything in place, because of mobile deposits and some of the new techniques in place, it's not secure anymore. So we're going to be looking at other options to pay bills. Also, I wanted to congratulate, we received a letter from the Department of Historic Resources informing the county of the distinct honor of owning a property now officially listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The National Park is a division of Department of Interior, and they've added Carver Price School to the National Register on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, so I wanted to report that. Also, I had a report, you had asked me, I guess several meetings back, to send a letter of invitation to the town council to see if we could meet, if both boards could meet, and we could have a type of meet and greet meeting and, you know, just start the conversation. And so I did send that letter out. Mr. McGee responded that he would discuss it with the town council and that he would let us know dates that maybe we could collaborate on a meeting or coordinate a meeting. And to date, we've not received a response. So I wouldn't want to put Mr. Simpson on the spot, but maybe he'll be able to help us out with that a little bit later. Also, the public safety radio system, I wanted to report on that. There's been some confusion about this board adopting an agreement, so I just wanted to kind of set the record straight. At the November twenty-three board meeting, the CTA consultants brought a recommendation to the board to approve a letter of intent to award RFP number twenty-three oh oh four radio system to the L three Harris Technologies Company. The letter of intent would authorize the Public Safety Committee, along with CTA, to negotiate a final contract to bring back to the Board of Supervisors for approval. As most of you know, the RFP pricing proposals were not submitted, were submitted, and with a range between five and thirteen million dollars. The board decided that additional research should be performed, and they did not accept the recommendation to award the letter of intent. Since that time, a local technician has been assessing the current equipment and infrastructure needs to be, to develop an enhanced plan for improved communications. The first priority was to improve law enforcement communications, which I'm happy to report that the repeater has been installed and reprogrammed. There's been new battery installations and other antenna fixes has created an improved communication system already. The board decided to hire the part-time technician to continue to work and collaborate with the county's public safety agencies towards the new improved system. This approach will enable a tremendous cost savings to the local taxpayers, while at the same time provide an improved communication safety to ensure that law enforcement, fire department, animal control, rescue squad, and citizens have a communication system that protects them. And last, under courthouse construction committee, you saw the presentation tonight, and as you can tell in the pictures, the courthouse is cleaned out, so I think some of you had asked if you could tour it, so it's safe enough now if you'd like to call either Jeff or myself to go inside and look around, so you can have an idea of what you would like toward the final renovation plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter?
I have a couple of questions for our county administrator.
Okay.
Number one, you say there's no response back yet from the town?
No, sir.
Well, I'd like to thank our chairman for meeting with the town in regards to help set up this meeting. That's number one. Number two, the cost savings by voting no on the submission that was Harris?
Well, the CTA consultants made the recommendation.
That equals out the possibility of how much savings for the county?
Millions of dollars.
Millions? Thank you all for doing your job, Ruth. And let's see, that's the third thing. Oh, I left off myself, and that is on the transfer station. There is no response back from them?
Well, inadvertently, I think, left that out. I'm sorry, you had mentioned it at the last meeting, and I will notate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I hear Mr. Carter. Any other questions? Reverend Jones?
I have one question, because I've had to call nine-one-one about three times in the last two weeks about cows in the road. Does that go to the sheriff or the animal control?
I don't know. I think probably both, depending on the situation.
I usually go to the neighbor.
That's right.
Unfortunately, when I'm driving through Mr. Woskell's district and there's cows in the road, I don't know who his citizens are.
We've had that issue in the past because we're not a...
Fence-in.
Fence-in. We don't have that law, then there's not any early legality.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Woskell?
I just want to again thank Mr. Carter for bringing that cost of the radio savings up, because it was a, it was a long, long road to go to get to where we are, and it does save the county millions of dollars, and we're very happy, and thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, well. I commit.
All righty, let's see, we also have a report from the Robert E. Lee Soil and Water Conservation District, means there for your caruso. School finance report for your reading pleasure. The VDAX Office of Veterinary Service letter of notification that we passed the inspection out there at the animal shelter. That's a good thing. And a letter from Campbell County regarding a special use permit application for the Hancock Road property, which is there for you, no actual requirement for us, is there for your reading. Any questions on those reports, sir? If not, this is a time for individual board members to share information with other members of the board and the public. Items presented under this heading requiring action will be for a future meeting agenda or to request additional information from staff members. No item presented under the heading shall be acted upon at this meeting without the unanimous consent of the board. Mr. Woskell, do you have anything? Reverend Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Some of the constituents in my district reached out to me about the car tax in the county. What they were saying was that they thought it was unfair that if you own a vehicle January the first and you sell it in February, you have to pay the taxes for the entire year. And so what they were saying was some counties like Bedford, for example, they prorate.
We don't.
And we don't. So it's a group of citizens that are very concerned, and I just wanted to get some information from you about that, so I can report back.
That would be a decision of the commissioner of revenue, so I would refer them to that office, but you're correct, Appomattox does not prorate.
So that's not a taxation issue for the board? It's, doesn't have anything to do with it?
Fire off.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hips?
I've got two things. I got, number one, the mayor of Pamplin came up, invited each of the individual board members here to attend their Sess sequential celebration this Saturday. I didn't say Sasquatch like she has. Ten AM in the morning until three in the afternoon, so if you're available, I'm sure the mayor would like to see our friendly faces at that. The other thing is that I've had several postings out there on Facebook about the fact that there's nothing here to do for children or for kids. And I'm going down through this, and I see Appomattox Community Park, frisbee, dish golf, hiking trails, athletic fields, Appomattox Youth Sports for baseball, T-ball, football, cheerleading, softball, and I understand that some of those have as many as three hundred kids in them. Appomattox Soccer Association, Balance Fitness and Gymnastics, gymnastics, tumbling classes, Boys Ninja, pole vaulting. Grace Hills Church has pickleball, Cub Scouts, dance, exercise class. Be Well Fitness has yoga and exercise class. Appomattox Extension Service has archery club, Fun with Foods, livestock club, handbell club, shooting education club, Trails and Tales Club, Wolf Keepers Club, summer four-age camp. Rocketar Ranch has horseback riding lessons, summer camps, horseshoes. Appomattox Art Gallery has children's art classes, paint night classes, calligraphy classes. Of course, our own Jamerson Library has the Courthouse Quilt Guild, the STEAM after-school programs, story and craft time, family movie night, after-school movie night, and then of course, the American Civil War Museum has the School for the Soldier and other day programs. Appomattox National Park has Junior Ranger Program and Summer Camp. Wolfbane has youth theater, Pirates of the Caribbean, hocus pocus, movie night, Lighthouse Dream Players, Drama Camp for Children, children's theater. Appomattox Christian Academy, youth choir and children's dance classes. Cornerstone Christian Academy, Summer Music Camp. Holiday Lake Four-Age Center has four-age camp, overbug camp, fishing camp, summer pool party, shooting education camp, nature explorer weekend, and I don't want to, since the mayor's here, I also want to mention in Pamplin, they have a yoga class on Monday night also, which I know our registrar attends. So I hope that those people on Facebook claiming we don't have enough activities for youth, I don't know how they could not find something there for their youth to do. And I've got another list here, too, that, you know, I won't read.
Mr. Carter? Any other...
We have a close session.
Oh, we have a close session, all right.
But, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like to add to your list. The county bought, when it bought, I should say purchased, the industrial park, one hundred acres of that six hundred acre tract was donated to the youth association. Also, the four fields, the lighting is paid for by the county. Also, the maintenance, which encompasses the mowing of the grass, replacement of the lights, all of those necessities, parking lots, thank you, is paid for by the county. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
All righty. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matter: consultation with legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specifically legal...